Okay, it looks like we are live and recording. Welcome everyone to the special virtual city commission meeting of the city of West Miami. Today is Friday, October 30th and it is 10:10 a.m. Madam Clerk, if you would, please instruct on how to join the meeting virtually for anyone who would like to join.
Yes, Madam Mayor, good morning, everyone. The instructions to participate in the virtual commission meeting, the city commission meeting is held virtually through Zoom and the public may join the meeting at https://zoom.us/j/3255236059. The person wishing to submit any comment will appear in the screens and during the meeting and will be afforded three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address for the record before speaking. Instructions to access the city commission meeting virtual by phone. First dial this number within the United States, 1301-715-8592. When you connect, a machine will ask you for the meeting ID. Then dial 325-523-6059 followed by a pound sign. Wait a few minutes until the host accepts and gives you access to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now for the roll call, please.
Yes, roll call, Mayor Ronda Rodriguez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Present Commissioner Candida Blanca. Is present. Commissioner Juan Blanes. It's not present. And Commissioner Luciano Suarez is excused.
I have a quorum, correct? Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chief Avila, for the pledge of allegiance, please, sir. Chief, I think you're muted.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if you will, please remain standing. I do realize that this is a special meeting and there is customarily not an invocation for special meetings. But today I'm going to ask for a very special invocation for Commissioner Suarez, his family, and for Inés, beautiful person inside and out. We all have lost a wonderful person and I ask the Lord for strength and peace for Luciano, for Commissioner Suarez and his family, so that they may see themselves through this difficult time in their own special way. Now, I'd also like to continue this with a moment of silence, so everyone can ask the Lord for their special intentions for Inés. Thank you all. Commissioner Suarez, our thoughts and our hearts are with you and your family. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Item three, public comments.
Anyone sign up for public comments?
No, Madam Mayor, not as of this time.
Next item.
Item four, special agenda items. Item four A, obtained before by the Office of the City Attorney in reference to Banham Healthcare versus City of West Miami litigation.
Good morning, all. This is a report that we have been advised by the court that the hearing on the oral argument shall be held November 14th and it will be at 1:30. Each side will have 10 minutes to state their arguments. And so this is a very brief report to advise you when and how we're going to have the oral argument. We hope that will be the last of this issue. Also, we have Melissa Hill, Office from the Office of the General Counsel of Acreman, that will have a brief explanation as to a former member of the Board of Directors of Banham that has applied to be joined in the Broward Office of Acreman.
Mr. Attorney, if I could interrupt you, sir, did you say that's going to be November 14?
Well.
You, but I thought you said the, I'm sorry, I understood the 14th. So it is still November 12th?
It is still November 12th up to this point.
Okay, sir, thank you. My mistake, I thought I heard you say the 14th, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Okay, let me correct that. If there's anything different, I'll advise everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Melissa.
Good morning, everyone. As Mr. Villalobos said, I am Melissa Hill, I'm the Assistant General Counsel with Acreman. And I just wanted to make you all aware that Acreman has offered employment to an associate in one of our offices who is now a former director of Banham Health. He served on the board and he let us know when we were starting his pre-hire process. In an abundance of caution, we did have him resign his position. And we did have the party sign an imputed waiver, which basically states they're okay with him joining us. He confirmed he was not exposed to confidential information pertaining to this matter, that he was just made aware of the matter at one of the board meetings. So we just wanted to make you all aware of that and let you know that we have taken a slew of precautions, we're having him sign an affidavit stating he has only heard of the matter and has not been exposed. We are implementing an internal ethical screen as well as putting an IT block in place. And like I said, we have received a signed waiver from Mr. Morgan in Banham and as well as the Urebase.
That's about it. I just wanted to advise the commission that this was ongoing. I think that I have talked to all of the commissioners about this. So this is the end of our report, is that correct, Melissa?
Yes.
Okay, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And if Mrs. Hill and you, Pepe, are comfortable with this and you've taken unnecessary precautions, I'm fine with it. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Hill or for the attorney on this matter? Yes, Madam Manager, go ahead, please.
Thank you, good morning, Melissa. And Mr. Villalobos, am I correct then that in assuming that Mr. Morgan will not be representing the matter before the city now? Just so that I know who will, who will we be dealing with?
No, sorry, go ahead, Mr.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
No, Mr. Morgan will still be representing Banham in the matter. He has just signed off on a waiver stating he understands that we are hiring this associate, that the associate hasn't really been exposed to anything besides knowing about the matter and that they will not seek to disqualify Acreman because of the hire.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
You're welcome.
So basically, Ms. Hill, you have dotted your i's and crossed all your t's on this because this, this is a very delicate situation for us and we've been in it for quite some time. And I know that our attorney, our three counsel have worked very hard on this. So I want to be sure that you guys have done everything you have to do to be sure this proceeds ethically and legally.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor, we absolutely have.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Anybody else have any questions? Okay.
Melissa, I don't think that you have to stay with us. You're welcome to stay with us if you want to, but it's up to you.
Thank you all, have a great weekend.
You too, thank you for being here. Mr. Attorney, anything else on that item?
No, nothing else.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Yes, item four B has been covered by Mr. Attorney and it's Melissa Hill, which was the report by the Legal Department of Acreman in reference to former member of Banham Healthcare Board of Directors. So next item is item four C, a resolution of the mayor on city commission of the city of West Miami.
Go ahead.
Provisions, making provisions for hybrid public meetings of the city commission planning and zoning board code enforcement and general public for personal appearance and for the use of communication media technology for attendance by using such technology by elected and appointed public officials and the general public, requiring a quorum of the commission to be present at the commission meeting, exempting city commissioners, board members and staff that for reasons of health and/or medical necessities cannot attend the scheduled meetings. However, can participate and vote via electronic means in order to protect the health, safety and welfare of elected and appointed officials, city staff and general public, providing for conflict, providing for separability and providing for an effective date by mayor and city commission.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Attorney, I'm going to yield to you on this one.
Yes, Madam Mayor, for some time before November 1st, you and I and the manager have been speaking about the possibility of having a hybrid type of way to conduct the meetings to afford those that cannot attend to attend via electronically and like we have done via Zoom. And those are members of the commission. There's a lot of statute mandates that the commissioners, the commissioners have to be met in person, except that the Attorney General on numerification have waived back forth, but now the law of the land or the recommendation of the Attorney General is that a commissioner that is either frail, elderly, sick or otherwise advised by physician that he should not attend meetings, that they can attend meetings and vote via Zoom. And the rest of the citizens that want to so attend likewise can do so via Zoom as well as personally. I have also drafted a series of protocols that I shared with the manager. I think the manager shared with you as to how and where persons that want to attend to commission meetings during this pandemic are to be conducted. I read this morning that the pandemic has increased at this point. Yesterday, there were 88,000 more citizens of the United States that were afflicted with the disease. So by no means this is over. There's no projection as to when and how this is going to end. But in the meantime, it is paramount importance for the health, safety and welfare of the people to continue the protections that we have been implementing. So this is the basis of the resolution that I have brought forward today. The governor has mandated up to today, up to now. And again, this has been back and forth, what the governor is going to do. He had waived the fiscal presence of all commissioners unauthorized Zoom meetings. But now the latest order was that that was going to end November 30th. I'm sorry, October 30th. So commencing on November 1st, you will have to either attend in person or through a hybrid like I have proposed.
And thank you, Mr. Attorney. And yes, as you, as you opened up saying, you and I had many conversations. And I was hoping that, that you, you know, after your, your research and your, your due diligence, that we would be able to continue our commission meetings on a hybrid model because of the pandemic that's still around, coronavirus is still here. And as you said, we don't know how long it's going to be around. So for the safety and well-being of our commission, our staff, I am very happy that you were able to provide us with this resolution for such. Does anyone have any questions for the attorney on this item?
Madam Mayor, I should say that today I learned that there might have been some technically difficulties. So I believe the, the manager and should meet with Mr. Quintana and see what, if anything else there is that we can do to to have this type of meetings.
Technical difficulties and what's my technical difficulty or was there something else I'm not aware of?
No, no, I would just learn today that that might be some technical difficulty, so.
Madam Manager, can you elaborate on that?
No, ma'am, I have not been briefed or made aware if in fact there is some type of IT or technical difficulty. This is first, first news to me.
Madam Clerk, go ahead, I see your hand up.
Yes, Madam Mayor, yesterday, actually, I was making the comment to Mr. Q. And he was, the lax experience we've had of these kinds of meetings was when we, in April, when we had determination, the terms and by lot of the terms and, and the positions. And we had, we struggled because there was a lot of feedback and a lot of coordination that was required. And that was what Mr. Q was expressing to me yesterday, that it has to be that we, we're gonna need some sort of of a technological provisions or something in order to conduct a meeting like half virtual and half in person. So I don't know enough about it, but he was making those comments to me yesterday that it may be a challenge to conduct those meetings. We can maybe, I don't know, try to ask him and so he can elaborate a little bit more because I don't know enough about it.
But I think, Madam Mayor, I think, Madam Mayor, that perhaps this is something that ought to be handled by the manager. And as far as today, the agenda is to approve the resolution. And that will be it, because otherwise we're going to be without a means to conduct the commission meetings.
I understand, sir. I just, since you mentioned it, I wanted just to get a little bit more detail on, on what you mentioned. So and I'm fine with that. Madam Manager, obviously, I leave this in your and Mr. Q's very, and the clerk's very capable hands. Just, you know, be sure to, to follow up with, with all of us as, as to what you find. Yes, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, and actually, if I may, Mary, I would appreciate when you made aware of these things so we could get ahead of the game. If I made aware of it, I know that the agenda deals with your office, but the accommodations, I think we should bring my office and Mr. Penna and all of the parties together when something like this is brought to your attention.
So it was, actually, it was a conversation.
No, no, I understand.
Yesterday, very late, last minute. And also, I, I, I have to publish an agenda today for Wednesday meeting. So I need specific instructions as to how to proceed, whether virtual or in person. I need instructions because.
Madam Clerk, once we pass this, well, if, if we, if we pass this resolution, it will be a hybrid virtual as stated in the resolution. Same thing, 10:00 a.m. virtual hybrid after we pass the resolution. So we're going to proceed, whatever we've discussed, the manager and Madam Clerk, which you've discussed, you will take offline. And we're going to continue with the, let me see, you already read the resolution? So.
Yes.
A Vice Mayor, Commissioner, do you have any questions for the attorney on this, on item C? Mr. Penna is waving feverishly, go ahead, sir. If it's on the technical side of it, we're going to take that offline, okay? So if it's not techno, go right ahead.
It's not techno, it's whether it rolls into the planning and zoning board the same.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, it is, planning and zoning and also code enforcement.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you. We'll send out a message to everybody this afternoon to let you know what has been done and how we're going to accommodate whatever it is that you are going to be approving today. So we will work on it.
I'm sure, I'm confident that you will. All right, so do I have any other questions or comments before I call for a motion?
Well, I have a, I have a question and a comment. It's not regarding the resolution, well, it's regarding things related to the resolution. The resolution is obviously necessary when you pass it. But the, I had sent the clerk to distribute to the commissioners and you, the mayor, the memo on, in regards to meeting times. I don't know if that was distributed or not, obviously, because I'm on the receiving end of it. But if it has been distributed or, can you confirm that that was distributed just to?
Yes, it's part of the agenda packet, it's in your packet, it's been distributed.
Vice Mayor, I see that, I see that in the package. And why don't we do this, since it is obviously not a part of the resolution? Let's finish with the resolution and then we can bring that up next in the good of the order, if that works with, for you.
Sure, sure.
Okay, perfect. So any other questions or comments before I call for a motion? I see none, so I need a motion on item C.
Motion.
Thank you, I need a second.
Take on.
I have a second, Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how did you vote?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Three, zero, item passes.
Thank you. And the next item is good of the order. Vice Mayor, thank you for your patience. So why don't we take up that now during the good of the order? The microphone is yours, sir.
Sure, and I apologize, I thought they was going to be distributed where it was pointed out. I understand you probably haven't gotten a chance to read it since it wasn't pointed out that it was included in the new agenda packet. But if you see there, it's not very long. It just deals with the meeting times for regular meetings, so not like what we're doing today. And basically, I just wanted to point out, I know that we changed the meeting times to 10:00 a.m. during the start of pandemic during the switch to virtual meetings. And I think a lot of that was just our rapid confusion and trying to get the tech challenges sorted out. And then we kind of stuck in that pattern. But local governments have a long history and including our local government of holding evening meetings or really for the benefit of the working resident who can't go and attend meetings during work hours for normal items that they have. The only cities that really do daytime meetings are either Indian Creek, which is 86 people and has basically billionaire bunker. They have four, the four richest, the 500 richest people in America. Or Miami, Coral Gables and Miami Beach, which largely deals with professional lobbyists, whose job it is to attend meetings. Every other local government, and I listed the meetings there, the meeting time is there. Every other local government in Miami Dade County does evening meetings for that reason. And I just thought, you know, now that we are moving back to in-person meetings, then maybe we should address this and see where we move forward. I know we have a long history of doing 7:30 meetings. You know, there is, there is wiggle room in doing evening meetings and not doing it so late. Maybe it's time to revisit that, but I do think that doing evening meetings is important for the benefit of residents.
Vice Mayor, thank you for your very thorough memo. And I did read it beforehand. I did see the package and I, and I was aware of it. So thank you for all the details that you've provided in there. Just a, a comment of my own, you said, or you mentioned that we made it at 10:00 due to confusion of everything being new and the pandemic and virtual. It wasn't confusion at all. I thought it was best that we, we hold it in the morning for everyone's sake, considering we were all going to be virtual and the fact that the staff would be, you know, at City Hall. So that's how that came about. It wasn't a matter of confusion, it was a matter of, of taking a lot into consideration. And before I open it up to, to the table, well, actually, no, let me, let me see if Commissioner Blanca has any questions or comments on this first or anyone from staff. Commissioner Blanca, wait, let me, let me, you're unmuted, go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay, I think we should keep the meeting at 10 o'clock while this pandemic is going on.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone from staff have any questions or comments for the Vice Mayor on this item?
I'd like to just, if I may, Madam Mayor, put in my, my comments for the record. I, for 35 years, 36 and a half years, I've attended evening meetings and my schedule, when it comes to work, will be accommodated to accommodate work, work-related. So whatever time you all decide, we, meaning the staff, will be here to accommodate the, the commission meeting agenda items. So as far as we're concerned, I know that the 10:00 a.m. seems, seems to be working because of the pandemic and some individuals can attend from home. Those that are either working remotely or for some reason are not strong enough to come in person. So, but as far as we are concerned and I'm directing my comments to staff, we're available. And so please feel free to make whatever call you deem appropriate.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, I've, I've noticed that our, our meetings have been extremely productive in the morning. And I, and I'm even including staff in this, you guys are already here. And I know, I know everyone in staff, you know, as far as staff is concerned, will accommodate whatever we decide. But I've noticed as far as productivity, it's, I feel it's been excellent. As far as residents, yes, I know we are virtual, but I've seen a lot more participation at 10:00 a.m. than I have in the evenings. The only time we usually have anyone come in the evenings is, you know, when there's something really big. As far as general meetings, I, we've had, we all know, we've had very little residential, resident participation. What was I going to say here? I just lost my train of thought. So, and I know right now we, our hybrid will still be virtual. Three of us have to be present together, but everyone else is virtual, staff and, and residents included. And I see that you, Vice Mayor, you've included all these different cities and that's wonderful. I think it's a refreshing change for us, this, this 10:00 a.m. meeting. And I, I feel that if, you know, a lot of our, a lot of our residents are retired and I don't, I'm thinking, you know, mornings are easier, especially for these parents who have, you know, their children's afternoon activities, homework, dinner, bath time. So for me, I think it's beneficial to, to continue with 10:00 a.m. I'm, if we want to, as you said, you know, you will accommodate, you can be flexible with the evening hours, I can say the same thing about the morning hours. We can be as flexible as, as we see fit. We can go later in the morning, we can go later. We can go early afternoon. I'm fine with that, but I, I feel that the, the morning meetings are much more productive as far as getting the city business done. So I, I'm wondering, do we, it's not a vote, it's not an item to vote on, but I guess we could do an all-in-favor?
I can interrupt you.
Go ahead, of course, no interruption at all, go ahead, sir.
Just make, address two things. Number one, I know, I know we have a, a large senior system population, but our largest population is still working families that do work during the day. And while we have been virtual meetings and there has been people who have come in during those times, mainly for issues, because people don't visit our city commission meetings for fun, unfortunately. The, the reality is that there, most people, 90% of offices will work from home during that time period. Now they are transitioned back into the workplace where they cannot, you know, for people who worked in an office here, and you included, I'm sure, you can't sit through a city commission meeting in the office. Your employer won't like that very much. It just, you know, there's, there's a reason, there's a reason why every, every local government that can do it, and I say can, because for those who attend the city. because for those of you that's in the city Miami meetings, it would be impossible to start it in the evening. But there is a reason that every local government, including now in the pandemic, has maintained their evening meetings and why the city has for, I don't know, probably since inception, had evenings in the evening. And it's for the benefit of the residents. The other thing is that I understand, Madam Manager, accommodating time during, you know, for daytime meetings. But the reality is that, you know, the time that our staff is on this call, you know, they're not being able to do their jobs. The manager can't answer calls during this time. The chief can't have cabinet meetings during this time. The public works director can't do any, Marty is on this call too, code enforcement. He's not able to do his job either during this time. And, you know, that's just something that in a small city like ours, unlike these bigger cities where you have directors who are not also on the field like we have here, where our directors are very hands-on. It's something different. And it's something that other cities of our size, which all have evening meetings, contemplate in doing so. So, you know, I would, I would say, you know, maybe we can put this on our agenda next meeting or when we have a, you know, fuller commission. But I really do believe it's important to analyze that again. And again, I know seven-thirty is late for some people. And maybe that, maybe that over time, it may be adjusted. I mean, it's in line with other cities. But, you know, you see other cities, theirs, they start at six, some of them start at eight, you know, there's wiggle room. But I do think evening meetings are incredibly important. The working, the working family cannot attend if they have an issue, if they have an issue. I'm not saying they're going to come for fun. They never come for fun. And I really, you know, it's unfortunate. But they cannot come for fun without taking off work. And I don't think that's appropriate for what our job is as commissioners.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm just going to follow up on a couple of things that you brought up. I don't think our staff has any problem getting their job done, no matter what time our meeting is. So as far as lessening their services to the public, I don't think that's an issue at all. They get their job done irregardless, however much time they might be on a meeting or on a call. Why don't we do this? Because right now, we're still virtual. We're going to go into hybrid since we did pass the resolution. So why don't we let this ride until the time comes? We don't know how long we're going to be virtual and hybrid. So you brought this up just as a discussion and we've discussed it. So why don't we maintain the status quo? I will get, well, Commissioner Blanca has already said she prefers ten AM as well. So why don't we do this, since the majority, both Commissioner, I mean, Commissioner Blanca and I think ten AM is a good time for our meetings, why don't we let it ride as it is until we get closer to the time that we're back, or will be considering having our meetings back in person, if that's okay with you?
Oh, about voter anyways, so.
Well, no, no.
That's fine, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine.
I mean, I want to be sure it's okay with you to let it ride because nothing's changing right now. We're still staying virtual. So we can bring, we can bring this up for discussion again. And hopefully, we will have, you know, we'll have a full table and we can get Commissioner Suarez's, you know, input and Commissioner Blanca's. And we'll bring it up as we get closer to in-person meetings.
All right, that sounds good. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. All right, let's see. Madam Clerk, that was a good of the order. So I only have one more thing for the good of the order. Please remember that tomorrow is our new Halloween event. It's going to be a drive-by candy giveaway at the West Miami Recreation Center. It will, we will be out there handing out candy from six to eight PM. And I know that the rec staff has prepared a lot of candy bags for us to give out. So I hope to see you all there. Mr. Penna, you're all set to go with decorations tomorrow? Yes? Okay. I think it's going to be fantastic. I'm glad that we'll be able to put this together, or we'll be putting this together for the kids. I know today, a lot of them were allowed to wear their costumes to school. But beyond that, you know, I don't know what these parents will be able to do with their children for Halloween. So I'm glad we, as a city, were able to, to try, you know, to make this Halloween as close to normal as possible for the kids. And I hope to see you all out there. Again, costumes are optional, but I just hope to see everyone out there. And if I don't see you out there, please enjoy your weekend, be safe. We are, you know, we all still have to remain vigilant and as safe as possible. So everyone have a great day and I hope to see you all out there tomorrow. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Thank you. Second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. This meeting is over. Have a great day, everyone.
Thank you. Likewise. Happy Halloween.
Thank you.